To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And trustee Marisak.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Under public participation, we have the public comment period that's any member of the public wishes to address the board on any topic can do so at this time. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. I've got a couple of proclamations this evening. I'll read both of them and then entertain a motion for approval. The first one we have is a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of the League of Woman Voters. Whereas February 14th, 1920, the League was formed in the Congress Hotel in Chicago, Illinois. Whereas the League was formed six months prior to but in anticipation of ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote in the United States. Whereas the League was a political experiment designed to help 20 million people carry out their new responsibilities as voters by educating them about issues. Whereas from the beginning, the League determined it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate. Whereas the League continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Whereas today, the League is composed of members in over 700 local, county, and state leagues, and in all 50 states, plus the District of Columbia, the Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong. Whereas among those state leagues of women voters of Illinois, that was incorporated in 1920, I'm sorry, in March 22nd of 1920, and in turn is composed of over 40 local leagues with almost 4,000 members. Whereas among those local leagues in Illinois is the Aurora Area Chapter that was recognized on July 25th of 2019, and in turn is composed of 28 members. Whereas members of the League first study and then take an action on a broad range of issues after reaching consensus on positions. Whereas leagues at all levels, among other activities, register voters, educate voters by holding candidate forums, and publishing voter guides, public, sorry, publish, public policy research, and hold meetings on key issues. Whereas the League is a civic organization that was, that has fought since 1920 to improve government and engage everyone in the decisions that impact their lives. Whereas the League will celebrate its 100th anniversary on February 14th, 2020. Now therefore, the Village of Montgomery, Illinois declares February 14th, 2020, as a date to celebrate the League of Woman Voters and its vision of a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate.
Do we need a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve.
Second. Oh, that's you.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes.
All right, with that, I do want to invite you up. We can take a picture.
I don't have anything. Signed version of this.
It doesn't mean they're voting for you, Matt.
All right, I can't skip over Engineers Week, so I'm going to read that one, too.
Maybe I should read that.
Yeah. All right, so the second one we have is a proclamation for Engineers Week, which is next week. Whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to improve society's quality of life. And whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disaster, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, clean, and efficient sources of water, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. Whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical knowledge, or sorry, the practical power of their knowledge. And whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Now therefore, I, Matt Rowley, as village president in Montgomery, on behalf of its citizens and village officials, do hereby proclaim the week of February 16th through the 22nd, 2020 to be National Engineers Week in all of Montgomery.
Can I approve?
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yeah.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Should we take a picture?
You wrote that yourself, didn't you, Matt?
No.
Just you and Pete.
I don't have a sash, so. All right, with that, um, with that, move on to the consent. Read the items, entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of January 27th. Executive session minutes of January 27th. Accounts payable through February 6th, 2020. The building report for January of 2020. Accounts receivable report for January of 2020. And the last item, water production report of January of 2020.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger.
That carries 5-0, thank you. Under items for separate action this evening, we have recommendation of Plan Commission on PC 2020-001, a special use request for a motor vehicle service located at 1335 Douglas Avenue, Suite G, and this is Montgomery Autos. And item B, we'll talk about these together, is ordinance 1876 granting a special use at this location, and that is first reading, no action tonight. Director Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have before you the item just outlined with a recommendation for approval from the Plan Commission, which met last Thursday night. This is for a small auto sales location that would be housed out of the Family Pantry portion of the center at Douglas and Montgomery Road. The applicant has requested the use of five parking spaces within the shopping centers overall parking complex directly in front of the Family Pantry Building. The special use would be granted only for, like I mentioned, five parking spaces. There could be no outdoor display or banners associated with the use, and the use would terminate if the applicant moves on to another business. The special use would be voided at that time. This is much like the special use that was granted a couple of years ago further south on Douglas Road in conjunction with an auto repair business and a auto transmission shop and, and, um, forgot what other type of auto-related use they have there. But it's a small operation with for-sale vehicles. And as I mentioned, the commission recommended approval via a vote of five to one.
All right.
The applicant is here tonight if you have any questions. Otherwise, we'd recommend going forward with an ordinance approval at your next meeting.
All right. Does the applicant have anything additional or specific? You don't have to, but if you want, if you had something else you wanted to add, you're welcome to address the board.
Should I sign in here?
You should be all right.
Sure. Okay. Good evening. My name is Riad Katoum. I come from the Family Pantry. I just pretty much wanted to add on that the state requirements for cases that didn't get discussed in the last meeting, we are required to have insurance and to be bonded. And that was pretty much all I wanted to add on to. So in terms of, you know, if damages or whatnot, these are going to be pretty much vehicles in very good condition, no junk vehicles, or, you know, anything in bad shape. And anything in excess, as I discussed in the last meeting, it would pretty much be stored in a car storage. But I just pretty much, that was my vision, just up to five vehicles. And I'm looking this at it as a short-term vision in order to grow in Montgomery hopefully one day and to have a, a much bigger, more suited automotive sale business. Yes, sir. That's pretty much it. If any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner or staff on the item?
Are you part of the Home Pantry or no?
The Family Pantry, correct.
So the sales tax, you, you got, you got your own, or does it go through the?
If I was to proceed on, if I was granted a special use, I would start a LLC with the state, and I would pretty much, it'd be a separate, you know, what do you call it? I think EIN or?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's something, I guess, that counted. He helps me out with, you know, all the crumbling numbers and everything of that sort.
It'd be leaving the sales tax separate of the pantry.
Yep. Yeah, it would be separate. Yep.
I have a question for staff. Did the dissenting Plan Commissioner give any reason for their, their?
It's my understanding that they dissented because they felt that we were issuing a temporary special use, which is not the case. This is a permanent special use. It would be limited, though, to just this specific user. It couldn't be transferred to a new business establishment on this location. So I believe that that was the case, that they dissented.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
One other question. There's discrepancy in some of the language between five cars and five spaces. I know in the, is the intention of the special use from Plan Commission to be no more than five cars in those spaces, like it says parked legally? Spaces or cars? What's the number that we're at? We're at five spaces, no more than five cars?
We're looking at no more than five vehicles, yes.
Okay. And the parking requirements for that facility and other businesses, removing those five spaces doesn't?
It would not affect, I'm sorry, thank you for bringing that up. I meant to mention that the, there's excess parking spaces to, to meet the needs of future because as you're all aware, there are some vacant units within.
Right.
A large vacant unit that used to be the Ace Hardware. It's hoped that obviously at some point in time that square footage is utilized, but there's more than adequate spaces that are not utilized now to accommodate whatever goes into the old Ace Hardware. Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Item here, item C is a recommendation, I'm sorry, that's not C, it's A. I already circled that one. Item A is the recommendation of Plan Commission. If there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger.
Yeah.
All right. And that carries 5-0. And then item B, we will, this is first reading, so we're not taking action on that tonight. Since trustee Marisak is not here tonight, I won't ask to put that on consent. So I'll have that on for separate action at a future meeting. All right, moving on, the next two items, we have recommendation of Plan Commission of PC 2020-004Z. This is the 2019 zoning map update. And then ordinance 1875, which is item D, which is approving the official zoning map for 2020. So is, the first one should say read as 2020 then, right? Zoning map? So unless you had something specific that you were dying to summarize on this, I'll entertain a motion on the.
I'd be happy to summarize the changes in the map, but essentially what it is, is the, all of the special use cases or plat's of subdivision that were granted in the last year by state law were required to publish a updated zoning map each year by the end of, I believe it's the end of March. So this is in concert with that requirement, and be happy to go over any details. But I left you at your station a larger copy because the one in the packet was very difficult to read. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Anything?
I have a quick question, just a clarification. The ordinance number 1850 for FH Passion, the temporary special use for outdoor storage, I believe that expired, they, within a couple of days when they were completed, correct? That's no longer in existence?
It's no longer in existence onsite, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yeah.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Item D, which is ordinance 1875, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Betsinger.
Yeah.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E this evening is an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Oswego and the United City of Yorkville for lobbyist services. Jeff?
Thank you. As most of you are probably aware, in the past, we have utilized on our own lobbyist services to try and help us push our position on different things. Through our shared services with the neighboring communities, we have the opportunity to join and share in lobbyists instead of bearing it all on our own. It seems to make sense since we have some items we're pursuing in common, one being the metro extension, one being our future water supply. We will be able to use the lobbyists for issues that are solely Montgomery issues, but seem like a, a good way to share costs and since we have some shared concerns. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so real quick, um, the letter from Casper and Nodge just specifically states that they're representing legislative issues on behalf of the village, which is the Village of Oswego. Is that being amended to include Montgomery?
I mean, we have an agreement that says it's for both of us. They were just the ones to hire them, and then, then it's shared between us, yes. That's what the IGA says, it's shared. But then the agreement's between Oswego and the lobbyists as far as the, the cost and the proposal.
Okay, yeah, because I noticed on the intergovernmental agreement, it says that they would represent us on behalf of communists, of the parties. It doesn't say anything about just interests on our behalf.
No, I did clarify that we can't use them for interests that are just solely ours.
Very good.
I think the, the big thing would be is that they can't be competing interests.
Right.
Right? Like taking over Oswego or, I know that's a big idea for Steve.
Of course. Can the Villa, um, can this lobbyist be used for like the winding Route 30? It would help up Yorkville, it would help Oswego, help certainly help.
Again, that's not something, that's not a competing thing. We're.
Okay.
Doing that hurts the other communities, so.
And I think the first two specific issues that Jeff mentioned, I mean, these are massive, big picture, huge projects that are going to require federal and state, you know, funding if we're going to move forward, especially with the water, which we, time is running out on that. And so, see, I see a huge value in, in joining forces here. So we have a seat at the table with the other communities while they search for funds and protect the $100 million that already has been earmarked for the metro extension.
So, quick question, and this is a little bit of a side step. Wow, it just went right out of my head, I'm sorry.
Shuffle right out of there.
It, yeah.
That's all right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Item F this evening is a word of contract for village-wide water leak survey to M.E. Simpson Company in the amount of $22,815. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. So the Village of Montgomery has historically performed an annual leak survey each year in order to detect both known and unknown water leaks in our distribution system. This year, staff put out for bid, and we received three bids of interested contractors. Basically, the, one of the contractors did not meet the requirements of the bid packet that we had put out. Therefore, M.E. Simpson Company was the low bidder. So the village and staff is recommending approving the contract award to M.E. Simpson Company for $22,815. If there's any questions regarding this contract, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
I don't need to tell you, but as we get ready to transition to a new water source in the next decade, having this tightened down as much as we can is going to save us potentially millions, not more.
Is this work contracted annually?
Correct.
Is there any benefit in, in extending this to a three or a five-year contract at some point? So you've got the, the benefits of having that same company year over year as we look to transition, knowing a little bit of the history and, and leaks that are detected and issues?
So there is some, some definite benefit, and I'm glad you brought that up. Actually, it came to my attention today in talking with another water superintendent from another community. They've actually joined with another community where they're teaming together and have written specs. So that's something that we, we're a little bit late in getting that information for this go-around, but it's something that we want to entertain going into next year. That is one of the things that they put in their RFP, was the ability to extend the contract with the same contractor for up to three years in a one-year increment each year. So, so yeah, that's definitely something. M.E. Simpson Company is actually the contractor that we utilized last year as well. We were very satisfied with their work, they're a very reputable contractor, so.
All right. Is there no other questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. The last item for separate action this evening is a PSA with Ladaback and Amen for audit and actuarial services. Director Menmore?
Thank you, President Rowley. This first came to light when the village needed to sign a separate actuarial engagement letter during the fiscal year 2019 audit. Village staff requested Ladaback and Amen to provide us with new contracts ending at the same time for actuarial services and audit services. As a result, Ladaback and Amen locked the audit rate for the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 in consideration for requesting additional years to our contract with them. Staff's requesting approval of the PSA with Ladaback and Amen. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer those at this time.
Thank you.
Is this currently a budgeted item? Or is this, I see it will be included in the budget each year, but currently is it budgeted?
The actuarial services and audit services are budgeted every year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yeah.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right. And that carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have a couple of items for discussion this evening. The first item is a pay and comp study presentation by Gov HR Alaska. Jeff for an introduction.
Thank you. As far as where, we contracted with Gov HR USA to perform a classification and compensation study for us. They have the results tonight. In front of you this evening, I gave you a hard copy of the PowerPoint and of the draft report itself. My goal tonight is to let Joellen present the report to you, or the PowerPoint, for you to ask her any questions you have, but not to have any real in-depth discussion tonight since you've just received the information. Our goal is to try and implement anything that we're doing as of May 1. So take it in tonight, then we'll let you guys, you know, digest the presentation, the report, and then we'll discuss it in the next few meetings along with the budget. And again, try and implement whatever we're doing as of May 1. So with that, I will pull up the PowerPoint. I'll let Joellen introduce herself.
Hey, good evening. I'm Joellen Catimartori from Gov HR USA, and we were asked to help you with the classification and compensation study. So as the village administrator said, I'm here to present the, the findings. It's a, it's a broad overview. What you have in front of you is a draft of the final report. So in the event that we need to make any edits or adjustments, we can do that before it's finalized. So as far as the presentation this evening, a few things I'm going to talk about. I'll go over the scope of work that we were asked to perform on behalf of the village, the job evaluation process that occurred, which included all of the village employees that were covered by the study, the proposed classification plan, which is essentially the list of the positions in the village, the compensation plan as well, and that was developed as a result of doing a survey of the market. And I'll talk about how we determined comparable communities. And then if you chose to implement this, how would you do that, and how would you maintain it in the future? And if you have any questions, feel free to stop me throughout. I don't have too, too many slides, but I can take them throughout the presentation or at the end. So this is the scope of the project. We were asked to conduct a job evaluation, develop a new classification plan, and then again, go to the market and look at compensation to determine if in fact you were competitive with the market. That started with some general meetings just to talk about process, scope, expectations with the village. We then went through an analysis to determine comparable communities. Again, I'll talk a little bit more about that. We came onsite and we did kickoff meetings with the employees that were covered by the study. I made a presentation. A questionnaire was filled out by the employees that were participating in the study. As a result of the presentation, we then came back and interviewed employees just to learn a little bit more about their jobs. You know, all, all of us that work at Gov HR have had some connection to local government. We've served in local government or had some other type of connection. So while we understand the work that you do in Montgomery, we don't understand it specifically. So coming here and talking with employees about their specific job duties is a very important part of the study. And the other thing I want you to know, too, is that we can't be successful in our work if your employees aren't helpful, and they were very helpful. So the administration was helpful as well as all of the employees. They were very forthcoming with information, which made our job a lot easier. And then after those interviews occurred, we went through a job evaluation process with a, with a tool that we use to determine what we call internal equity, looking at all the positions in relation to one another. And then at the same time, we, we pulled in information from the market on the compensation, and we analyzed that. So what you have in front of you again is the draft of the final report. I'm here to present it, and then after you have discussion, if you need any more information from me, I'll be happy to give it to you before it's finalized. So the first part of this study is job evaluation. And as I mentioned, it establishes what we call internal equity, meaning we look at the positions in Montgomery in relation to each other. So while there might be similar positions that you have here in another community, doing a job evaluation in your village allows us to look at any of those special nuances that make positions unique. So every position in the study was evaluated based on these nine factors that are listed here. So every job has to have some type of preparation and training, such as some type of education. Maybe they have licenses that they need in order to perform their work, things of that nature. Experience, judgment, policy, which is the fourth one listed here, has to do with the, if there's a requirement that the position has to develop policy. So while you would approve it, there is a correlation with the Fair Labor Standards Act with this factor, actually, because if there's a high need for a position to have to be involved with policy development, then it's a possibility that the position would be exempt. We look at planning of work, which just has to do with how much autonomy someone has in planning their own workday, and then the work of others. Contact, contact with each other, contact with the community, contact with other agency of governments, or how broad is that contact, and with whom are your employees having it? Work of others, meaning supervision, are they supervisor? And if so, how many employees do they supervise? And then the second. And then, the second to last one, the working conditions, is another factor that complies with federal law, the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, job descriptions, it's very important that the physical requirements are listed as well as the working conditions. So, in the event that somebody applied for a position with the village who needed an accommodation, if the job description is specific, then you can say yes or no, we can make an accommodation for you to do the work. And then, the last one is technology. And really, what we're measuring here is technological proficiency. So, not only does it relate to computers and things of that nature, it also relates to use of equipment, whether it's specialized equipment, whether it's heavy equipment, whether it requires some type of dexterity like firing a weapon. So, it's a broader look at technological proficiency for all jobs. So, every position in the study, there were 27 of them, were evaluated based on these factors. The next thing that we did was we did the job evaluation analysis. So, that required us to then look at the questionnaires, and they're actually scored. So, in your report on page 23 is the classification plan. And that classification plan has 12 grades, and it's divided into three bands, administrative and technical, supervisors and advanced technical, your directors and managers, and then there's a separate grade for the village administrator. But again, the positions that scored similarly ended up at the same grade. So, that's what internal equity means. So, if two positions scored 400 points, they should be assigned to the same grade, and because they're in the same grade, they should get paid the same. So, it actually brings in equal pay philosophy as well. So, the first table is that classification plan. As I mentioned, it has 12 grades that we've developed as a result of our evaluation. The second part was the salary survey. So, we went through an analysis to determine comparable communities to Montgomery. And you can see up here, we look at eight different criteria. And this analysis is the appendix B in your report. It's on page 33. It starts on page 33. But we look at eight factors, six of which are financial. And all of this information is sourced through the Illinois Comptroller's Office. So, if anybody really wanted to look at it, you could look it up. But essentially, what we do is we look at each of these different factors, and we weight communities against these factors. And the communities that are most like Montgomery will rise to the top of the list. So, we had a lot of communities that we were able to look at, and as a result, we came up with 23 communities to which we should compare. And I will tell you that it's not easy to get salary survey information from communities. Everyone's busy, but you had a tremendous response. So, I was really pleased with it. We had a lot of data to work with, and that was really terrific. So, you can see some are close, some aren't as close. But again, they're based on these criteria. In the appendix B, you can, there's the criteria and how it's evaluated. Then, there's two more attachments that is the list of all communities based on the score, which ones were the closest. So, you'll see these at the top. The second one is in alphabetical order. So, in the event you want to look for a particular community, you can look for it that way. And then, the last part of that appendix is the top comparable communities, which are these 23. Okay? So, when you conduct a salary survey, it's really important that the positions are defined because, as you can imagine, and if you think of everything that you do, if you went to a competitor, if you went to another municipality, a job may not have the same title. So, we take time to evaluate, define the position, and then that way, if a community wants to respond with a title that's different, we know that, and it's actually included in the report. The other thing that we do is we thoroughly review the data. We want to make sure that what is being submitted to us is an actual apples-to-apples comparison. So, in appendix three of the report, all of the detail is there. And if we disagreed with a particular data point, we removed it. But if we removed it, we're transparent. So, there might be a position title with all of the data and a couple of lines highlighted, and then on the very next page, you'd have the data again with the word edited behind the title. And what that means is there were a few data points we disagreed with, and we removed it. So, that way, if anybody had any question about why we did that, we can respond. So, we go through it very thoroughly to make sure that it actually is comparable information. And we do tend to try and use the response that's provided by the community because the people that are giving us the data are the experts. So, we don't want to just pull things out. We will only really remove something if it doesn't look right, or we follow up with the community, and we know it's not the same position.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
When you were comparing the positions, when you're getting the response, are they also submitting back to us a job description so that there is that comparison of pretty much the same responsibilities?
No, no. We define each position with about a paragraph worth of an explanation of what it is. So, we're using that as the job definition, and then they're responding to that.
Okay.
And if something really doesn't look right, we'll follow up. Or sometimes, we just know. So, for the finance director, for example, if we got an account clerk back, we know that's not the same title, that salary's going to be way off, you know? So, sometimes that happens, and it's very obvious. Other times, we have to follow up with communities.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Salary range data is the best method for comparative purposes, and you had a lot of that in your report, which is terrific. Sometimes, communities will give us actual salary data, and if you see that in the report, it's not utilized. If we had at least three data points, three ranges, that's what the analysis is based on. And the reasons for that is if we only have an actual salary, there's two things. One is, we don't know how long the incumbent has been in the position, so we have no idea. And the second is, we don't know under which, under which the conditions were when the person was hired. So, what was the market at that time? So, if we have a salary range, it's a much better gauge of the market, and we had plenty of that for your study. And then, the last point here is, when you do a salary survey, it's a snapshot in time. So, whether the data was 2020 data, 2019 data, it doesn't matter. If an employee from the Village of Montgomery applied for a position in any of those other listed communities, whatever the range is at that time is the market. So, whether it's up to date or not, it's still the market. So, it's a snapshot in time. And again, that's the longest appendix in your report. Appendix C has all of the particular data. So, after we go through the job analysis, the job evaluation process, and we look at all of the data, we come up with the compensation plan and the classification plan. So, the table two in your report, which is on page 24, really brings together all of the information. Really, if you look at that table, it just illustrates the findings of the study. So, on the left side of that table, you'll have position title, you'll have the skill level, which is the point range that the position scored based on the questionnaire, where it falls into the new grade, and then it'll have salary survey data. And for this study, we looked at information at the 50th percentile and the 60th percentile. And then, also on the right-hand side, the compensation side, you'll have the actual salary of incumbent employees and then the recommended ranges. And we looked at two different, just to give some flexibility. So, we looked at two different, the 50th percentile and the 60th percentile. And the 50th percentile is the exact middle. So, what that means is a community will pay, communities will pay, some communities will pay 50% more for the same position, and some will pay 50%. At the 60th percentile, some communities pay 40% more and others pay 60% less. Okay? So, we looked in between those ranges. And then, again, we came up with three compensation grades, and if you look at the table three, it's just the compensation grades broken out into these individual bands. So, you can see how they relate to one another. And when you look at the table three, which is the very next page, page 25, there's two things that you want to keep in mind. The first is gradation, and the second one is range spread. So, what gradation means, it means it's the difference in starting pay. So, you can see here, there's a 10% gradation between grades one and four and eight and 11. So, all that means is grade two, the starting pay, is 10% more than grade one, grade three is 10% more than grade two, grade four is 10% more than grade three. That's what gradation is. So, that was 10% between grades one and four and eight and 11, and 15% between grades five and seven. And the reason, one of the reasons why we put pay bands together and have several grades in one pay band is because it gives us flexibility to as closely match the market as we can. That's why the gradation differs. The other thing is the range spread. And you can see here, grades one through four have a 35% range spread, which is the difference between minimum pay and maximum pay. So, for grades one through four, the maximum pay is 35% higher than the minimum, and then for the remaining grades, it's 40%. And sometimes, we see a difference here, too, because the positions that are assigned to grades one through four, your administrative and technical band, tend to be the more entry-level positions in the organization, and in those cases, you usually will start people closer to the minimum pay. When you get up into the higher grades, when you get up to where your exempt employees are, if you had to bring someone in, you may not bring them in at the minimum. So, having a little bit more of a spread is beneficial. Implementing this going forward, we have a standard recommendation, and essentially, what we recommend is, when you look at the actual pay of an employee, if his or her pay is below the recommended minimum for the range, we recommend that incumbent employee's pay be brought up to the minimum. There's a few, very few positions that are here, but there are a few. Everyone else is in the range, which is good. What that means is, is that employees are being paid within the market. Now, they're not at the top of the range, but they're in the range. So, everyone else covered by the studies and the range. And then, the last point is, if anyone was outside the maximum, that their pay be frozen, but you don't have that case here. So, that's how we would recommend you implement it. We have open ranges, meaning you have a minimum and a maximum, and everyone moves in, and then you can implement the study. And then, the last point is how to administer this in the future. So, if you administer the system, it will last you for 10 years or more. It's, the village has the tools, the questionnaire, the scoring tool. If, for some reason, you need a new position created, you fill out the questionnaire, you grade it, you slide it into the system. I'm available to the village for at least a year. This probably won't happen tomorrow, but I don't charge my clients for that. I want to make sure the village can use the system. So, if there's some reason, something has to get tweaked, an email is fine, and we can talk about it to make sure that it looks good based on what the original analysis was. So, if every year, you know, jobs are looked at, if there needs to be a new position, or if there needs to be a position reclassified, meaning the duties have changed a little bit, if that occurs, and movement within the classification plan occurs if necessary, then you're going to keep up your classification plan. And a lot of employers, when I go in to do this work, they just haven't done that, you know? They say, oh, it's been 20 years, and so, things are really out of whack. So, yours was pretty good to begin with, and now you'll be able to maintain it going forward. And then, on the compensation side, all you really need to do is get in touch with those 23 municipalities every year. Did I do something? No. Okay. Every year, and survey them to see if they're adjusting their pay ranges. So, if they are, and you take an average during budget, say it's 2%, and you adjust your ranges, your minimum and maximum by the corresponding amount, then your pay ranges will stay up with the market. So, that's a pretty easy thing to do. Now, sometimes, I have clients that do it every year. Sometimes, they adjust them every two years. But as long as you're doing it on a regular basis, then you'll stay up with the market, and you won't fall behind. So, that is a general overview of the study. Everything I'm explaining to you is in the narrative of the report, so if you read that, it's, I gave you a pretty broad overview. The tables one, two, and three are really the meat of the report, especially that table two pulls everything together. And then, the appendices are the questionnaire that we used, which talks about all those different job factors, the comparable community analysis, and then all of the raw salary survey data. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's awesome. And if you see anybody squirming over here, it's because our monitors are flashing at us, so.
Oh, exactly. I didn't do that.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Are there any questions for Joellen while she's here? Dan?
I have one question. The comparable communities, as part of this, and of course, we haven't looked at it yet, so I'm going to ask this, and it's maybe in the report, but did you ask what type of compensation program they have? And that I mean step versus merit. Just seeing some of those communities up there, I know that three or four have step increase merits instead of just like a 1, 2, 3%. So, it's a, you know, every year, they get a specific step increase. Is that identified in this plan?
It is not. What I recommend is an open-range merit plan, which is, you have a minimum and maximum, and then, and what that does is it gives, now, how the village chooses to implement it is a different story. You may want some steps, but I always recommend the open-range merit. And people move through the system based on performance, and the village would fund a merit pool in order to give it an increment. And the good thing about that is, it can vary from year to year depending on your financial situation. So, you're not necessarily locked into the steps, but the village may want to use the step system. So, that is something that's a local option at implementation.
Okay.
And I have lots of suggestions, if we did need to talk about that, about how you might want to structure it depending on what your goals are.
Okay, yeah, because I know some of those communities up there, they do have set step plans, and I feel that that, that has merit to it as far as analyzing, because you may look at a range, and you may think, well, you know, that's off a little bit. But if they have a set steps, so for instance, if a community has step increases and the employee moves through that range quickly in seven years, and maybe somebody has a different type of step, or it takes them 15 years to move through that range, I think that's useful information also.
It is. It definitely is when you're designing your plan. But what we looked at was just that minimum step and that maximum, you know? So, we were looking at it in a more holistic way.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I got one real quick. In the past, we've always worried about, like, our maintenance workers going to some other place close. We don't consider St. Charles close, although one of our guys did. But it was because of the money in St. Charles and the size and all that. But we've always had a Swigo in it, and I noticed you didn't use a Swigo at all in That would be one where the guy would say, it's right next door, I'll just switch over. And we always used that because we were fairly comparable with them, except in police, where they had a lot more police and a different arrangement. But you never even, you never got figures from a Swigo?
No, and even if we did, I mean, we could always go back and add it. You had so much data that another data point is, will not skew the results. If I added another 10, maybe, but not one. So, if that's something that's important, we can always see if we can pull some data. The community, if we look at it, I can, we probably looked at...
Yeah, they're bigger than us.
Yes.
While we're looking that up, can we just shut the AV off? Because we're about to have a seizure.
Dale can take it down.
So, the cutoff we used was 86 points for comparability. A Swigo scored 78. So, it's still comparable, it's just not as comparable. So, if you, I have had clients say to me, we know that, but can you still include them? So, if it's your desire to have us do that, we can always go back and ask them for the data.
I worry about that, just because there's a scientific method that was put this together. And if we started adding it, I get it. I get what you're saying, but this, so I was looking back at your criterion for our comps, and it more or less defines a municipality's ability to pay, to fund a salary like this, sort of fund salary structures like this. That's why we're not compared to Evanston, let's say, or whatnot. So, there's a scientific approach to this, and if we start adding in, like, if you want a Swigo, and he wants, you know, a different community, then we've skewed the results, or we're just massaging it to the answer that we might want. So, I do like the approach, the way that it is, and I appreciate the comments. I know that's a concern of Denny's. The reality is that somebody could go work for some of those other communities, but we want to pay a salary, a range that we can afford, and also one that is competitive with communities of our type, in my opinion. Any other questions? Any other questions? I know you haven't reviewed it yet. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Hey, you too.
As you read it, if you have questions, feel free to, you know, email me, call me with questions, so we can have answers for you. Our plan would be to have this as an item for discussion at the next, you know, however many meetings until the board feels that it has a plan where it would like.
Question for, for Jeff. How do you feel the staff did during this process? Receptive to the interviews and the questionnaire and the...
Everything I heard, they were yes. Like I said, we had the kickoff meetings, and, you know, people obviously were there and interested, and it sounds like from the interviews, everybody participated openly and freely, and, you know, filled out the forms as they were asked in a timely fashion, so.
I'm assuming tomorrow, staff has, will have access to this draft report for...
Yes.
eyeballs, everything?
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. We'll address this at the next few meetings, I'm sure. All right, and move on to the second item for discussion this evening, which is unincorporated...
Hey, I'm sorry, can we, can we get an electronic version of the report? Draft as a PDF, please? Thank you. Sorry, Matt.
No, no worries. All right, unincorporated water tap policy?
This'll probably be a tag team. Jared, myself, Mark, and, and Pete will probably talk about this, but we've been approached on a more regular basis recently about providing water service to unincorporated, either businesses or residents, particularly on the north side, where we abut up to some unincorporated property that is not in the city of Aurora, but is close to either their water system or our water system. Excuse me. And in the past, the village policy had been that if you abutted the community, you abutted Montgomery, and you wanted water service, you needed to annex and pay a capital improvement fee for roads and storm sewer and that type of thing. We wanted to discuss this with the village board to see what you felt would be an ongoing policy with regards to unincorporated properties being served by village water. So there's a few different options. We could continue to require that property be annexed for village water, and that a street fee or capital improvement fee would be required to be paid. The street fee could be calculated by our consulting engineers, based on the condition of the current roadways and linear street frontage of a parcel. And additionally, the policy could be to annex, annexation would be required to the village water system, or to the village for water with no capital improvement fee to the existing conditions of the roads. Thirdly, annexation would not be required, and the village could look obviously at a water tap system to the village water system for new customers, but pay a slightly higher rate, or I shouldn't say slightly, a higher water rate associated with any accounts that would be outside of the village limits. We don't expect an answer tonight, but we wanted you to think about this in terms of how we go about it, because we have had a number of requests in the last year or so with regards to the extension of water service to unincorporated properties.
Director Young, I have a question for you. The types of properties that we've been getting requests from, is it...
It's primarily been single-family homes.
And that's what I was envisioning in my mind. Is, is it unfair to have two different, have a policy for commercial users versus residential, or is, is that not appropriate? Because I, I'm thinking of it in my mind as a residential user that lives off of, let's say Montgomery Road or north here of downtown, that's currently on a well, that would like higher-quality water, safer drinking water, in my opinion. I would definitely support allowing them to annex to, and provide water. And I think they, that we've been consistent in requiring people to pay the tap fee, pay for the meter. I know about ten years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Denny, we talked about this on Montgomery Road, and at the time, the village's opinion was that they had to pay that road fee as well, which was, you know, to put in sidewalk, curb and gutter, storm sewer, and full width road, that, you know, frankly, we still haven't done over there, and so folks decided not to. I don't think we need to require that of residents, in my opinion, and that's kind of up for the board to, to consider, to pay for a small chunk of their road, because that is very cost prohibitive. If you look at the existing residents and who, you know, just in general, the home values of what would be, what would be wanted to tie on, it just wouldn't work out. I'd take that a step further, and even consider for those existing homes that are, I guess, I mean, holistically anywhere, that were not on our water system, to require them to pay the tap fee, but also allow them to pay that over several months, or whatever Justin's done in the past with, with some of the water stuff, if they need to, or if they can prove some sort of hardship and that kind of thing. I see the ancillary benefit, one, to getting additional residents in town. That helps us financially. It also helps us for, I believe, code enforcement issues that we could have or would want to enforce in, in areas of our town, and then ensures that they have quality drinking water, so.
Usually the case is such that their wells have failed, or they're failing, and that's the reason they approach us. That doesn't happen a hundred percent of the time, but that's the majority of the time that, that folks are coming to us. We've had a little bit of a different situation up in the, what I would call the north-central side of town, where primarily along Jericho Road, where there's, obviously, water service is much closer to the city of Aurora than it is to where we provide water. So we've had some arrangements with the city of Aurora that's provided some incorporated or unincorporated properties, I don't know about unincorporated, but incorporated properties with water service. But you're exactly right. The situation of some older homes that are unincorporated north of Montgomery Road, where there basically is open ditch, there is no storm sewer, there's no sidewalks, to add that fee, or the potential fee, even if it's in payments over time, where we're not providing those services to our own residents that might be on a block, because there's a number of different blocks that have a hodgepodge. There's a house in Montgomery, then there's an unincorporated parcel, then there's the city of Aurora. Those capital improvement dollars have not been spent on those, some of those neighborhoods.
Because I just confirmed kind of what Matt had said. In all three options, we would expect the, the person tapping on our system to pay the tap fee and the meter fee. So not listed, so we expect that in all of them. And really, as you said, the impetus for us doing this is the road fee. That's been the thing that kind of keeps people from doing it. And we're, the village is at a different point with our roadway system than we were when we first did this policy. Now with the IRP, we have a lot greater ability to, to maintain our roads. And so again, we thought it was a good revisit, just to see if we can help people who maybe want to get onto a, as he said, a safer, higher-quality water system. So, because currently, like I said, the policy requires annexation, tap fee, and the road fee. So if you're willing to just go annexation and tap fee, that makes it easier on, on someone who's considering it.
What if they do not want to annex, but they pay the tap fee, that thing?
Again, that's the third option we have, if the board's willing to consider that.
And then pay the higher price like Boulder Hill people.
You could essentially pay the higher water rate fee.
Right, like Boulder Hill.
Right. So you may want to set it that they have to annex, or you may want to be flexible? I mean, that's really what we're bringing to you guys, that's...
The street part is, especially when you say, when we get down Montgomery Road, because one street's ours, and the next street's Aurora's, and the next one's township. But I also know they like water and some, in fact, I think we had that on Jericho, where we let them tap into Aurora, because it was so much closer, even though it was ours.
That's exactly correct.
And that makes a lot of sense, just practically speaking. I wouldn't be interested in selling the water and allowing residents, in a hodgepodge manner, to remain unincorporated in perpetuity. I don't think that helps, I don't think that helps Aurora Township, Aurora, the city of Aurora, and us. It just, it just perpetuates this issue, right? I'd like to see us actually try and clean that up, if folks were interested, if we had a new policy. We approach them and say, if you wanted to, you know, annex in, well, here's the offer that we can make you. Because reality is, your property taxes will go up a hundred or two hundred dollars, depending on the value of your house.
What if he's in the middle of Watson, say? I mean, how is he going to annex to us?
Well, you have to be contiguous.
You'd have to be contiguous, or you'd have to put together a number of properties to be contiguous.
Or pre-annexation? Agreement?
Or pre-annexation.
Yeah, that's what's typically done. I know City of Aurora does that, if, if they require it, but if you aren't able to annex, they have you sign a pre-annexation agreement.
So that once you become the village...
The neighboring properties annexed in your...
Possibly the other side benefit, and we're still a ways away from this, and we really need future development on the west side on large tracts to accomplish this. But every residence that's added, obviously adds to the population to get to home rule status. We're at a, but we estimate we're at about twenty thousand today. Obviously, you know, we need to be at twenty-five to be home rule, so.
We better go change those signs out for a twenty.
That's our calculated estimate.
Right. No, but it makes sense. And our MFT, not MFT, our state, some of our state shared revenue is on a per capita basis, so, I mean, all of that helps. And our police officers are, know where they're responding. It'd be nice to just have that be a cohesive area of the city of Aurora and Montgomery, so that we're providing those services, so. I've spoken too much. Teresa, do you have any thoughts? Dan?
Yeah, I don't support the road fee. I, I never really have. I, I think back, it was probably fifteen years ago, retired couple, fixed income, their well needed to be redeveloped. IDPH said, no, you have water running in front of your house, you have to tap on. It's going to be like fifteen thousand, after they paid the road fee and everything. And luckily, they worked out something with IDPH, and they got some type of hardship grant loan. I've always thought that that was, that was not fair. If somebody wants clean drinking water, and, you know, the village's water is subjected to regulations, and a private well is not. Once it's developed, it's, it's theirs, and who knows what they're drinking, and what's in that well water. My opinion is, if, if, if somebody wants to annex in, we'll have them annex in. But if somebody wants to tap on our drinking water, because they have an issue with their well, or they want just access to, to better drinking water, we should allow it. We should give them the choice if they want to annex in or not. Yeah, I'm not for blocking people from having quality drinking water. I mean, everybody complains about that in countries throughout the world, that, that's the number-one resource that everybody should have access to. And I, I'm not in favor of blocking anybody from tapping on.
So you, you don't want them to annex?
I would, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them the choice if they wanted to annex. You know, the, you know, I understand what you're saying as far as, you know, bringing men, you know, increases the population. There's not that many houses that's going to get us that much closer to home rule. And the, the water is its own profit center. There, nothing from general tax money goes to support the water system. So by them paying that extra amount of money, or the fees, or whatever, we're providing the water through the water system, not through other tax revenues. So it's not like they're getting a free ride off of taxpayers in the village.
I think commercially, though, if somebody wants our water, they should annex. A prime example of that is Western Electric. For years, we let them use our water when they had a shutdown, and yet, all those cars came out of there ruining our roads, and we never got any taxes from them. So once they ran out of water, the one time Ellis, the mayor, decided, we aren't going to give you any water unless you annex, and they had to. Right now, VVF is in that boat. They got their own water now, but it'd be nice if we, you know, if they come into, or come in for our water, then they should annex in.
About two years ago, maybe eighteen months ago, they did approach us about water without annexation, and we told them the village policy was to annex.
Right. I think commercially, it should stay that way.
Steve?
Option two.
What was that?
The...
The annex?
Annexation without the road fee.
Okay. Let's rise it. Tom?
Same.
Sounds like Denny and Dan would prefer...
Option three, option two for commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, option three for residential.
Two and three.
And two for commercial.
Teresa, do you have thoughts, or do you, should we talk about it another night?
No, I would, I would agree with what Dan just said. So two for the commercial, annexation is required. And then number three for residential.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, that was easy, so it's...
Sorry.
Yeah. So it looks like we're going to talk about it again.
Okay.
That's tight, so.
Why?
That's fine.
With Doug.
Why do it for one and not the other? Or why require for one and not the other?
Well, because residential, residential is, is consumption on a residential basis. It's a family. It's, you know, people are, are in that house, and they need water to support their family. Commercial, you know, they, they need to annex in, because they're using it either for a process or for bathrooms, or using it for, you know, for profit.
Twenty residential homes is not more than one commercial business? If it, if it's just restrooms at a commercial business? What's the difference?
No, so what I'm saying is, is in a residential home, you have people that are using the water to bathe, to cook, to consume. I mean, they need the water in their house for daily functions, for, you know, just, just to live, basically. Where a commercial business is either, you know, if it's a gas station or whatever, they're, they're using it for bathrooms. It's not, the primary use isn't for consumption, for the support of a residential household. It's for a business. I mean, a lot of businesses, too. I mean, you know, they have fire lines in them, it's to protect their, their business through a, a fire system, so they're really not even using the water in that, in that regard.
So you're saying as much, it's more of a necessity for residents than it is a commercial?
Correct.
And I'm not going to argue that.
But in a commercial business, aren't you still required to have operable restrooms and those sorts of facilities?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't see the, I don't see this, this part of it swaying. I think the number-one reason why you would need somebody to annex, if they wanted the water so bad, but they don't want to annex, it makes me wonder the status of the, and the condition of their property. I don't want to throw any specific township or county, you know, under the bus in the conversation, but reality is, we know that their code enforcement standards and their enforcement of those standards are not what we do. And I see the future of this village enforcing a, those are standards uniformly across the entire village, including in areas that are currently unincorporated. So that'll improve the value of the entire area by doing that. That's why you can't come in and get water without annexing.
So what do you do with a house that's in the middle of the block, like Denny was saying, that wants to come in?
Pre-annexation.
Yeah. So how's pre-annexation work? Then when the whole street goes and they annex in?
Or as soon as they're contiguous, we can, yeah.
If you're on countryside, or, or, I mean, on the, the street next to countryside, and you want to annex in, it'd be very easy, because countryside's already are. But Montgomery Road's a good example. You had some businesses there that are not belong, I don't know where they belong, I think they're township. But they may all of a sudden want water.
Yeah.
And then we're sitting with, why should annex in? Especially when the place right next door to you is Montgomery. Then you should annex in if you want our water. That's what I have to look at. It kind of depends where the guy is, there's no doubt, but that's where the loose ends are right now. Montgomery Road's a prime example, or...
Yeah. And I think requiring the annex, annexation, or pre-annexation should be our policy. Because once we approve that here, do we have to vote again to actually annex them later? Well, either way, it doesn't. But either way, they've already approved it, and so it just happens later on, so.
So what do we do with it? The restaurant on Montgomery Road, it used to be Bill's Restaurant? The restaurant on Montgomery Road, it used to be Bill's Restaurant. They went on our water, didn't they? I know they had some sewer issues, did they?
I don't remember exactly what happened.
I thought they went on our water because they were a well.
Jared might know.
I just remember there was a water issue, they got them cleared out.
I believe that they are on our water. I would have to double check, but they are also annexed within the village of Montgomery.
Okay.
The little shop in center down farther is not, that's township. Because we've talked to that guy about coming through, and he wouldn't do it.
Depends on the property. There's some that are in and some that are out.
Yeah, he's out, yeah. That's right.
There, you're exactly correct. There are a number of properties that are not in the village of Montgomery. The water main on Montgomery Road is on the south side of the street, so it is a bit of a process in that regard to connect. It's a little bit more because you have to have a county permit to either bore or cut that road.
Okay. One other question I have too. How, how does Fox Metro play into this, then? If someone's required, if someone goes on our water, then are they required to hook up the Fox Metro? Okay.
No.
So...
It could operate on septic.
Okay.
Put our, our water in septic. All right. Which they already have, if they're on a well.
Well, on the septic. I mean, there are some subdivisions that have sanitary sewer service, but people are on wells, and then there are some that are on well and septic, so it, it can be both.
Okay.
At North River, we have some people on wells, right, that are on sanitary?
Well, yeah, there's a number of locations, I, I just don't know all of them, yeah.
Okay. This would be a really great couple of years to try and actively encourage folks down Montgomery Road to make connections before we, or Kane County widens that. You know, I know it's not funded, but someday, the work's going to be done from, what was it, Douglas, all the way over to Hill. So, be good to get all those cuts in now. All right, so we'll talk about this at the next meeting, or a future meeting.
Yep, we'll bring it back.
All right, moving on. Anything new or unfinished? Must not be any football, so I will go to future meetings. We are not going to have the committee of the whole on February 18th. We're going to reschedule that to February 24th, 6:00 PM, up in the room upstairs, before our 7:00 PM meeting down here. The intergovernmental agreement, I'm sorry, intergovernmental committee meeting for that night is going to be rescheduled to March 9th at 6:00 PM upstairs, and then our board meeting at 7:00 PM on February 24th. That'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger?
Definitely.
Return.